Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to call to order the July 15th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas. Commissioner Basjartash. Commissioner Biddle. Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. We understand that many of the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19 have been rescinded or are due to expire soon. However, many orders remain in effect, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. There are no commissioners participating remotely today. The public may stream a live view of this meeting by going to the website listed on the agenda or by watching it on your local government channel. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing's portion of the agenda. In other words, if you're here on Item 5A or 6A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please. All matters listed on the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or a commissioner request specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to adopt.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. That was... Okay, I'm ready to go here. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Actually, we need a vote. We have a roll call vote, please. We roll call or we do an electronic thing here? Let's do this.
You can do electronically.
I'm sorry?
If you can do electronically.
Okay, let's do it. There we go.
Motion passes with Commissioner Lomas absent, Commissioner Basjartash absent, and Commissioner Biddle absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent public hearings.
Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item for further Seeing none. Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item? This time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff recommendation on consent calendar consent public hearing items incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
I'll make a motion.
That's Commissioner Kater.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Wade. Madam Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Motion approved with Commissioner Coleman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lomas, Commissioner Basjartash, and Commissioner Biddle all absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Non-consent public hearings.
Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report?
Thank you, Chair Coleman. Tonight, we have one item, Item 6A, which is a conditional use permit for a food vending vehicle, which I'll refer to as a food truck. This project site is located on Wybelle Road just north of White Lane. The project site is zoned C1, neighborhood commercial. Food trucks are not what you're typically used to, which is in Title 17, the zoning ordinance. These are under Title V, which is business taxes license, business taxes, licenses, and regulations. And a food truck is defined as any vehicle from which any type of food or beverage is sold or offered for sale directly to any consumer. This does not include like Uber Eats or any vehicle as such. There are certain requirements for a food truck to be set back in which zones they are in, and if they meet these requirements, it is permitted use, and that is that the food truck is at least 75 feet from a restaurant, brick and mortar restaurant, at least 200 feet from a residential zone district, at least 300 feet from a public playground, and it has to be located in one of the commercial zones or industrial zones that you see listed there. An applicant can ask for a conditional use permit if it does not meet this requirement, and as the previous slide said, this is in the C1 zone, so the applicant is asking for a conditional use permit based on the zone district. Some of the general requirements that all food trucks have to comply with is no selling of alcohol. These must be walk-up service. You cannot drive up and have food delivered in your vehicle. No amplified sound or loudspeakers. These can occupy no more than 300 parking stalls. The hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM maximum, Monday through Saturday, and 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sunday. And they can have a maximum of up to three tables and 12 chairs, which must be removed nightly at the close of the business. All food trucks must maintain a valid business tax certificate from the city. They also must maintain a valid food vending vehicle permit from the city. They must obtain a permit from Kern County Public Health Services, and if applicable, a conditional use permit. The food vending vehicle permit from the city and the permit from the Kern Public Health Services are annual permits that must be renewed annually. Food trucks do not receive a letter grade such as a brick and mortar. However, they do receive a sticker, and the Kern Public Health Services or Environmental Health, they do an annual, what's called a mobile food roundup, where trucks have to be brought in and inspected, and then they can do random inspections throughout the year. And again, the food vending vehicle permit from the city needs to be renewed annually through the Treasury Department. What brings us here today is this food truck was already established. It was a code violation. They applied for the permit through the city Treasury Department that was denied based on input from the planning department that it needed a conditional use permit. They appealed that decision to the city manager's office, and it was upheld, or I should say the appeal was denied, and the decision to deny the city permit was upheld, and that brings us to today where the applicant did submit a conditional use permit, and that is what you are considering. As with every conditional use permit, there are two findings that must be made, that the proposed use is deemed essential or desirable to the public, and that the proposed use is in harmony with the elements and objectives of the general plan. Staff believes that these findings can be made, and therefore, staff is recommending conditions of approval to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and also conditions that are in Title V that all food trucks must comply with. We are recommending those as conditions of approval also. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available if there's any questions.
Thank you. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Does you want to speak, mister, sir? Are you the applicant?
I am the applicant.
Okay, why don't you come to the microphone and state your name?
My name is Mohamed Sophia.
Could you please spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, that's M-O-H-A-M-M-E-D, and last name Sophia, S-A-P-H-I-E-H. And I just wanted...
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about, I seen the regulations, 200 feet is, I would have to be 200 feet away from the nearest residential property, which I'm a little further than that, and then 70, was it 75 feet from the nearest restaurant, which I am a little further than that. And I also have over 200 signatures of fans and, you know, good Samaritans that are in favor of us being there. And we are ready to, you know, follow any conditions that you guys present. So, we were told that we were able to take only three parking spaces, so we modified how we parked and set up our tables a certain way to be able to fit within that guideline. And, I mean, other than that, I mean, that's all I got to say. And I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to present my argument. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to... Let me back up. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the project? All right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. I don't see any people. Does any commissioner have any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. It's only time to ask questions. Commissioner Bauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a question for the applicant. What type, is it a taco shop or...
Mediterranean food.
Why don't you come back to the microphone, and that way, if we have more questions, we can get you on the record, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mediterranean, is it kind of like some of the Mediterranean spots downtown?
Kind of similar to like Flamin' Skewers. It's, we got shawarma and gyro, hummus, falafels, good stuff, all organic, no GMOs, healthy.
No further questions.
Five-star rating in Bakersfield on all platforms, by the way.
I love his self speech. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No more questions.
Got to try it.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for the public on this item? So, we don't have to do rebuttals here, so, I'm sorry, I see, I'm sure Kater would like to.
Just a quick question for staff. Just to clarify, the applicant is just needing the conditional use to exist in the C1 zone? There's no other deviations being asked for on the mobile food vendor?
That's correct. As the applicant noted correctly, if he's parked in the furthest stall, and I can go back to a photo if you need, he is more than 200 feet away from the residential to the north. He is more than 75 feet away from other brick and mortar restaurants, so it is strictly because of the C1 zone.
And if he was in the C2 zone, it would not, we'd not have this conversation, is that?
If he was in the C2 zone, the Treasury would have issued the permit.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff. Why? Do you know what the thought process is, why they excluded the C1 zone and required that to have a conditional use permit?
C1 zones are neighborhood commercial, so they're usually adjacent to residential zones, and in trying to maintain that 200 feet, they didn't want to include it as a by right in the C1 zone because more than likely, it would be within 200 feet of a
I see. Also, I was noticing when I was reading through section, chapter 5.66, food vending vehicles, the operation, hours of operation seem to be a little different than what we're approving It says that ours operation will be between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM from Monday through Saturday, and between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM on Sunday.
That's correct. The ordinance allows till the 1:00 AM, but I believe the applicant has self-imposed 10:00 PM.
We close at...
10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
We close at 6:30 daily, yeah.
All right. All right, so there's not going to be any, not going to be any evening hours?
No.
All right. And is that, is that vehicle removed at night, or was the, is it stay there overnight, or what does it do?
No, I actually take it home every night.
Okay.
Would I be able to leave it overnight?
Yeah, we really can't answer any questions right now, so. So, you can address that question with staff at a later time. I was supposed to tell you that when you spoke, that we can't answer questions until after things close, so. That's all the questions I have. We're going to skip the rebuttals because there would be no people, all right? Okay, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action. Commissioner Kater?
I'll start us out. I just want to say, I've been really encouraged seeing the rise of mobile food-based businesses in Kern County and Bakersfield over the last five, 10 years. I think I, especially as we've diversified in options, different cuisines, I think it's a really great way as a community to help businesses establish themselves who maybe aren't ready to take the plunge into a brick and mortar. And so, I mean, I think to me, we're looking at, my biggest question tonight is if we allow restaurants in a C1 zone, why we don't allow mobile food by right? But that's not what we're looking at tonight. So, I would just make a motion that we approve the applicant's request.
Commissioner Wade, you look like you want to speak.
Just to second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Kater and a second by Commissioner Wade. Mr. Commissioner Bowers, do you have any more comments before we vote? All right. I just want to have, I do want to have one comment. I agree in conflict with the other commissioners about the food trucks. I'm all for small business and giving them opportunity to start up. I just, I like that we applied some restrictions, especially in relation to how far they are away from brick and mortar businesses. We kind of tend to treat food vendor, food truck vendors differently than we would treat if somebody pulled up with a trailer and started selling plumbing supplies in front of Home Depot. I think everybody would have a different take on that thing. So, although I do appreciate the entrepreneurship and people starting their businesses. But beyond that, I think we can move ahead and move to a vote. Madam Clerk, can we please have a vote?
Motion approved with Commissioner Lomas, Commissioner Basjartash, and Commissioner Biddle absent.
Yeah, my vote was actually... Probably four, but I didn't confirm it in time, so. I don't know if we can just like mark up what we want on there, or what? Does it matter, Ms. King?
It's on the record, so you, so it's a vote of four? Yeah.
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 There we go. Thank you. See, we can just change it however we want. I think we're done with that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Chair Coleman, if the applicant would like to sit through the workshop and listen to a great presentation on Visit Bakersfield, I will happily speak with him regarding his question after.
Okay, so there you go.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Yeah, we have a workshop. Do I just talk, or am I, do I just talk, or am I going to get an introduction?
Mr. Johnson's not going to introduce you.
No introduction. I'm a man who needs no introduction. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
It's a good thing you got one, so.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, good evening. I'm David Lyman with Visit Bakersfield. Thank you for setting aside a few minutes for me this evening. This is not the first time I have addressed the Planning Commission. In a previous life, I was a principal planner in the city's Economic and Community Development Department, the old one. And at that time, I was shepherding through the formation of two redevelopment project areas, not one, but two simultaneously, Southeast Bakersfield and Old Town Kern Pioneer. For those of you who are familiar with the redevelopment project formation process, it's very intense, very detailed. Doing two at a time, I can see it can drive someone to drink. But that did not happen. Both projects were formed successfully. We had no legal challenges filed, which was very successful and a tribute to everyone who was involved. So, now it's more than 20 years later. Apparently, I have sufficiently recovered from that experience to the point where Mr. Johnson kindly invited me back tonight to make this presentation about Visit Bakersfield. So, I always enjoy updating the community about what's going on in the travel and tourism industry, specifically what we're doing at Visit Bakersfield. So, the first question, of course, is who and what is Visit Bakersfield? We are a small group of people who work in this funky building down the street in front of the Amtrak station who make big things happen. Two takeaways I hope you take from that. One is we're a small group of people, and we make big things happen. We're funded, let me tell you a little bit about it. We are a division of the Economic and Community Development Department, the new one, not the old one. We are funded solely through transient occupancy tax or TOT funds, otherwise known as the hotel tax, or the bed tax, or the hotel bed tax. We receive no general fund or PSVS monies, commonly known as Measure N, and we are an example of an absolutely positively successful public-private partnership between the city of Bakersfield and the Greater Bakersfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. The CVB Board of Directors, whose names you see here, provide us with valuable counsel and community feedback, and it's their continued support that have been key to our productive relationship over the past 14 years. Our goal at Visit Bakersfield is very simple. We help people spend their money in California's ninth-largest city. And although visitor traffic has been down worldwide, not just in Bakersfield, we continue to assist visitors with all kinds of information. But in addition to visitors, we serve human resource professionals, people interviewing for jobs, new residents, real estate agents, business owners, real estate investors, and referrals. So, while people think of us as the Bakersfield Visitor Center, we are in fact Bakersfield Information Center. In the few minutes that I have with you this evening, I'd like to discuss the economic impacts of travel and tourism, share with you some of our successes during the past year, one of the successes is not working, here we go, and also our plans for the year ahead. And also, I'll leave some time for questions at the end. But first, let me talk to you briefly about the economic impacts of travel and tourism. Tourism helps power Bakersfield's economy. Many people think that tourism is nice, and it is, but I'd like you to know that travel and tourism is full of lots of dollar signs. I've got two charts I'd like to share with you. The first, this is the chart of the city's TOT transient occupancy tax revenues back through fiscal year '05-'06. And as you see towards the very beginning, it kind of slid with the Great Recession. Once we came out of the Great Recession, you see a rapid increase. We were cooking with gas. Up to last two years ago, we made it to $9.9 million in TOT revenues, highest it's ever been. Well, the pandemic shows up, we quickly lose 20%. Good news, the city's Financial Services Department projects an increase this coming year to $8.5 million. The second chart shows hotel occupancy rate. This is for a seven-week period beginning the first week of March. I was working on an article for the Kern Business Journal, looking to see how hotels were performing a year after the beginning of the pandemic. So, with the hotel occupancy rate, doesn't tell you much. Let's look at year over year. Still doesn't tell you much because that same time a year before, we were all in a freefall. That's not a surprise. The surprise was when we looked at the year before, the one year before pandemic, 2019. And what I find is that we're actually pacing ahead of where we were two years ago, before the pandemic. That's a very interesting surprise. Now, these data do not suggest that we're out of the woods, but it is very positive for the local hotel industry. So, now, after seeing both of those charts, I have to ask you the David Lyman question, which is, so what? What does all of this mean? Thank you for asking. I'm happy to tell you. As you can see, people are still staying in Bakersfield Hotels, and TOT is continuing to generate millions of dollars to the city of Bakersfield, creating economic impacts. Let's take a look at the direct economic impact from people staying the night in Bakersfield Hotels. Let's use that $8.5 million figure. That's how much money is going to come to the city of Bakersfield estimated in the current fiscal year from TOT. The TOT in the city of Bakersfield is 12% of the hotel rate. What's the hotel rate? Very simple. Take $8.5 million divided by 12%, and you get almost $71 million. You add those two figures together, and we get almost $80 million. That's the amount of money that people will leave at the front desks when they leave hotels in the city of Bakersfield in the coming year. Almost $80 million. That's the direct economic impact of people spending the night in hotels in the city of Bakersfield. That does not include spending on what I call the three F's, the three F's of food, fuel, and fun. As I mentioned earlier, our goal is to help people spend their money in California's ninth-largest city. That's been a challenge during the last year because it requires two things. It requires people. There weren't a lot of people here in the last year. There weren't a lot of people anywhere in the last year. And also, there were not a lot of places for people to spend their money. That meant we had to repivot our work plan. And in that fine tradition of turning lemons into lemonade, we created a new work plan, and our new reality is based on the following. We do not see lots of foreign visitors coming anytime soon. People are not jumping on airplanes en masse and coming to California. We also do not see a lot of group travel coming anytime soon like we're used to. It's more individual travel, and it's going to be more short distances, and they're going to be traveling in cars. The drive market will be the first to return. Also, we wanted to make sure that we supported our local venues and businesses because when visitors returned, we wanted the places that we all know and love to still be here for people to come and visit and spend their money. So, let me share with you some of our successes during the past year. Because people still wanted to know what was going on, we created Webinar Wednesdays. These were specifically targeted to people in the hotel industry, so they were knowing what was going on. One of them was looking at our museum trail. Even though the museums were closed, they were still offering a lot of programs virtually. Another one of our webinars focused on... on outdoor recreation, as well as, very topical, our, uh, very outstanding food trucks. Live music concerts? Well, not during a pandemic, but then the Fox Theater came up with this great idea, uh, the live stream vaccine concerts. It was a unique way to get people to have live entertainment from their home without going out. We really wanted to support the Fox Theater, so we quickly signed on as the presenting sponsor. It was good for the Fox. It was great for Visit Bakersfield because every week, our name went up on the marquee. Every week, our name was on the banner behind all of the presenters, and our name was also on the promotional material. This was a great success, a great idea from the Fox Theater because we wanted the Fox Theater to still be around. Um, and also we wanted to present live music opportunities. They did it after New Year's, and we signed on for the second series as well. Uh, Bakersfield stuff. People ask for it all the time. Where to get it? There wasn't any. So we went into the retail business. We now sell official Christmas ornaments, hats, shirts, bags, shot glasses, and magnets. You want them? Bakersfieldswag.com or come down to our office. We have them, all sizes, all colors. Last year, during the pandemic, to keep kids busy and keeps parents sane and to try to generate some money into our local economy, we held a weekly coloring contest. And each week, the winning kid got a $150 gift certificate to a local entertainment venue to help prime the local economy when things opened up. We took all of those coloring contest winners, and we made the first ever Bakersfield coloring book. We printed 500. They were gone in two and a half days. People ask us about the Kern River Parkway Trail. Where is it? How to access it? Where to park? Good to see. So we created the first ever Parkway Trail brochure, which I know Mr. Johnson gave to each of you. Thank you very much, Mr. Wade, for holding it up for the camera. Thank you. Um, it's available for download, and it's also available at all the local bike shops. People were working from home, and hotels were empty. So what we did was we started a list of all the hotels that were offering day rates for people looking for quiet and private workspaces. And if you were working from home, like I was for 14 months, and you absolutely needed the official Bakersfield Zoom backgrounds, we created six, and they were so popular, we created six more. We heard a lot about frontline workers during the past year. Many people didn't think about hotel workers as being frontline essential workers, but they were out there, and we wanted to recognize them. So we developed the Hotel Heroes program to recognize the workers in Bakersfield hotels. The hotel workers loved it. We took this downtime to hang banners in the Amtrak station, promoting our city and directing people to our website. There weren't a lot of travelers at that time, but when they're there, we're ready. We did the same approach in the parking lot. Those banners went up recently. One of the many things we do very well is to promote local events. Most annual events last year didn't happen, but some made some changes like the Holiday Lights of Calm, and we helped to get the word out on those. We also promote positive economic news about Bakersfield. Most of these items you do not see in the local media. I don't see the local media people here, so I can say that. You do not see this in the local news media, and if you do, chances are, the information started at the news desk at Visit Bakersfield. Positive news from Visit Bakersfield also finds its way into the Kern Business Journal in every issue. We also generate little-known facts about Bakersfield, like when it was our 123rd birthday. The news started with Visit Bakersfield and was picked up throughout town. We've been working on some audio driving tours and should have them finished shortly. These will be GPS-based and will provide turn-by-turn directions. These audio driving tours will be available for free on our website and can easily be downloaded. We recently installed Bakersfield selfie spots on our building. We've got one on the Truxton Avenue side and one on the Amtrak side. Uh, now you can take your photo in front of the classic Bakersfield business card 24 hours a day. Our new Visitors Guide, which you just have, um, just came out a few weeks ago, just in time for summer. We call it the Official Bakersfield Insider's Guide. It's our first guide that has no advertising. We think it's our best one yet, and I have to tell you, it was just nominated for a national award. And just a few weeks ago, we launched the Bakersfield Brewery Trail, and it was a hit. We made it on the front page of the newspaper. I do not think that was because it was a slow business day. I think it, a news day. I think it was because it was a great story idea. This was our first savings pass, and the demand for it was greater than anyone expected. Not only did people flock to the breweries, um, to win the custom growler or T-shirt, the brewery owners gave it a thumbs up. I'll give you a quick example. We kicked it off on a Wednesday. The next day, one of the brewery owners told us that his business for that Wednesday was double his usual Wednesday business, double. And we ran through our inventory of growlers. We thought it was going to take five or six days to award all those growlers. Uh, they were gone in 72 hours. And in our spare time, we continue to give people information about Bakersfield, just like it says on our window. We answered questions like what's open, what's, what to do, where to go. Even when the town was closed, we were still getting questions, and we were there to provide the answers. Oh, we also got this cool new sign in front of our office. If you haven't driven by, please drive by. Always looking for information about Bakersfield is on our sign. So here's what we plan on doing in the year ahead. We'll completely overhaul our website. It's still there. Check it out. Visitbakersfield.com, but it's five years old, and we need to stay current to be up with our competition. We're going to try again to hold our first Restaurant Week. We tried it two times in the last year, but we kept getting pushed out by the pandemic. We hope the third time we'll be lucky. This is an outstanding program that's used in hundreds of cities across the United States. So mark your calendar for January 2022 for the first Bakersfield Restaurant Week. We're also going to keep promoting made-in-Bakersfield products to help spur demand for locally-made items. We'll continue to monitor and respond to comments and questions on travel apps and websites like Trip Advisor, Travelocity, and Expedia. We're going to repackage our Webinar Wednesdays into Tourism Tuesday podcasts, and whenever large groups return, not if, but when, we will be there with our Bakersfield information table like we were there at the CIF Wrestling Championships a few years ago. We're going to launch another Bakersfield Savings Pass using mobile technology, and in that same vein, we are going to explore other mobile opportunities for distributing information. We'll also focus our marketing efforts around the reopening of Bakersfield from a travel and tourism perspective. We'll consider expanding our operating hours into the weekend, and again, we'll continue to be the central source for information for all things Bakersfield, for residents or anyone who wants to know anything and practically everything about California's ninth largest city. In closing, you may know that Bakersfield is the United States' 52nd largest city by population, larger than places like Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, or St. Louis, Missouri. But when you look at the size of each city's destination marketing organization, Explore St. Louis has 57 people, Visit Pittsburgh has 29, and Visit Bakersfield has five. Remember, I began my presentation by saying we're a small group of people who make big things happen, and we make those big things happen by helping people spend money in California's ninth largest city. You can check us out. We're on Facebook. We're on Instagram at Visit Bakersfield. Also, our webpage, visitbakersfield.com. You can also visit the old-fashioned way by coming down in person. We're at 515 Truxton Avenue, right in front of the Amtrak Station, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and 8 to 12, and 1 to 5. I thank you for your kind attention this afternoon, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman, for a great presentation. Um, do any commissioners have any questions or, hmm, I don't know how to make this thing work. So, Mr. Wade, you look like you want to speak. No? Mr. Kater? Commissioner Bowers?
No, I just wanted to thank David for your, uh, commitment and wavering devotion to the city of Bakersfield, but your staff and you are always exceptional. So phenomenal work. Hopefully those selfies move to like the Luigi's and Wool Growers and the Pyrenees Wall soon.
Can I, can I add something real quick? Our next savings, because nobody's listening. I know this is not a public, uh, meeting. Um, our next savings pass is going to be selfie spots, and we're going to encourage people, and we've got, you go take so many, and you register, and then you get a prize. And so we have a list of local selfie spots, and we're going to be promoting that. So, I can't say I gave you the idea, but I'm going to tell you, we're going to jump on that, and you're going to see that really, really soon. Because there are a lot of great places that are unique to Bakersfield. We're not trying to be anyplace else. We're trying to be Bakersfield. And there are a lot of places that are unique to our community, so watch for that.
That's what makes you a rock star. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Mr. Lyman, thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, Director Johnson sent me the photo that you sent. Uh, you know, we had an interaction when I was on the Redevelopment Agency. I want to thank you for sharing that photo. Was that 12 years ago or something, or more?
I, I don't, I think the year started with a two. I think that's, that's okay.
I think you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for sharing that. Uh, I, you know, I was thinking I gained weight, but I guess I've always been heavy, so, so thanks for sharing that.
I thought it was a great photo. I thought it was a great photo.
It was a great photo, and that was, uh, for those that don't know, we're talking about the city of Bakersfield, uh, won an award for, I believe it was for the Mill Creek Development Project, and that was a time we went to San, San Francisco to, uh, collect the award on behalf of the city. So, uh, Mr. Lyman, you've always been doing great work for the city, and we thank you very much, and thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you. And I did ask Mr. Johnson, and I know his staff is working on this research question, who else besides Larry Coleman has chaired two city boards? You were chair of the Bakersfield Redevelopment Agency or the chair of the Bakersfield Planning Commission? I don't know if, that's a little bit of trivia you need to research, but, um...
Is there any money goes along with that? Little something, something, yeah. So, thank you, Mr. Lyman.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I have one more question. We're still number nine. Uh, we haven't moved up on the, on the, on the charts.
In terms of, uh, population, um, no, we're still number nine as far as I know. Number eight is Oakland. Number 10 is Anaheim. But we're in the, in the top 10.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Coleman, can I ask?
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to say, Mr. Lyman, thank you so much. What a good presentation.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say kudos for the Restaurant Week. I think, having lived in a few cities that actively participate, I think it's a really great way to add excitement and buzz in January after the holidays, focus attention back on local restaurants, and I'm excited to see how Bakersfield does it. Uh, and then second, I just had a question as far as, um, Visit Bakersfield, are there target markets that we're pursuing as far as, um, spreading the message of Bakersfield? Are we looking within the state, within the country? You know, what are some of our external optics that are undertaken?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Kater, um, for group travel, and we're not seeing group, but we're thinking long-term, um, youth sports is one of our big markets. Youth sports, yes. Softball, soccer, all kinds of that, because we have facilities. Um, and because we have a young population, we have all these wonderful recreational opportunities and venues, and so it's not just for locals. We have those, um, right now, again, because it's the drive market, we're not doing international, and the focus of Visit California and everybody is the drive market. So we're looking to more, to do that. And then we do have our printed material, like you have, distributed around our nearby national parks, because we know, and if you look at a map of California, how do you get from Yosemite, Sequoia, Kings Canyon, to Death Valley in Las Vegas? Right through Bakersfield. Every day about 11:00, 11:30, people kind of show up because they're in between. So we are focusing on those areas because we know people drive through. We don't want them to drive through. We want them to stop and spend their money. So that's one of the focuses that we're doing, primarily is, is the national parks and getting that, that drive market. We're not going to see anybody flying here for a while, and again, the international, like I said, no, but the drive market around the national parks.
Great. Well, I just appreciate it. I think, you know, as our community sees a lot of people moving into the community from other parts of the state, you know, more affordable housing, I think it's really great organizations that, that go beyond the escape the expensive coastal cities and have a cheap house and start to talk about the quality of the place of Bakersfield and why we love it. I think it's just a really great way to, to do our city justice when people, even people that move here, you know. So thank you.
And we, because we have such, so few people on our staff, we rely on, that's why we go out and do presentations. We need to educate our local ambassadors because you are the ones who family and friends come to see, and you're the ones that they ask what there is to see and do. And I don't want any of you, not any of the other people, to say, "I don't know." So we need to educate them. So I appreciate that opportunity. And if anybody has any opportunities, we, you know, have presentation, we'll travel.
Right when this meeting's over, I'm walking to the Padre, where I have two friends from San Diego waiting for me at the bar, who have stopped in Bakersfield on their way going up north. So everything you just described, I'm about to go participate in, and I will be that ambassador.
All right.
I'm going to hand them a Kern River Parkway.
Sure.
He didn't bring his bike, but, you know.
Well, the only other timely is, is with the nice food truck operator here, who is, I want to get his information so we can add it to our list as well. So, thank you again, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Uh, communications, uh, Mr. Johnson, do you have any communications?
Yes, the August 5th meeting is tentatively to be canceled. Um, so we would, we would be looking at the August 19th meeting as the next meeting.
Great, thank you. Commissioner comments? Any commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Bowers?
Yeah, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank, uh, Director Johnson and his staff. I know I've bothered Oscar on many calls, but thank you so much. You have had a arduous schedule, and you've been very attentive. So, thank you so much, and thank you to the city staff.
Uh, I want to make a comment here. On behalf of the planning commission and staff, I want to take a moment to recognize the passing of Roger McIntosh, who passed away on June 10th, 2021, after prolonged illness. Uh, Roger established one of the Bakersfield's leading civil engineering surveying and land planning firms. In 1974, Roger became the youngest licensed land surveyor in the state of California. He would ultimately become the principal in charge of major projects for Castle &amp; Cook, The Marketplace, The Shops at Riverwalk, Gosford, Gosford Village, Seven Oaks, Maya Cinema, and many other commercial centers and residential developments. Roger has, was instrumental in creating a wide variety of places where people live, work, and thrive. That was evident by the number of times Roger spent in front of this commission advocating for his clients' needs. He challenged our staff to be better planners and the commissioners to be better informed. We will miss Roger, but look forward to the continued collaboration with McIntosh and Associates. Commissioner Wade?
Thank you. I'm so happy that you reminded me. I've, you know, when I read his obituary, when I heard that he, he passed, I already knew I wanted to say something about him. Yeah, I've, I've, I've been on the commission now for, for quite a while, uh, and I, I have leaned over to countless commissioners to my side. When I saw him walking up on a tough project that I knew the commission was not gonna, is not liking on paper, and I leaned over and said, I call, I would, you used to call him the, the planning commission ninja, because he'd come up and he would flip, he would flip the planning commission when he laid out his case in the way he did, and he would rebut every logical argument against the, you know, that's going through everybody's heads independently. He, he was the planning ninja, and he'd, he'd come up here and do amazing stuff. So he, he truly was a, a titan when it came to development. He was an amazing guy.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Adjournment.
Uh, we're adjourned. Yeah, so we'll see you August 19th, I suppose. All right, thank you.